We're good.
All right. I would like to call to order the special business meeting to interview and fill the expired term for council members for Ward 4 is July 13, 2020. And our first interviewee is Jenny Leonard. Hi Jenny.
Hello, everybody.
So, so let me tell you how this works is we have your application here that you sent to us.
Yes.
And we have reviewed that. If you had something additional that you would like to add, you can do that. Otherwise, we just take turns and ask you whatever questions that we have come up with. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, that's good. Did you have anything that you wanted to add before we started?
At this point, I think that I pretty much put everything into the resume that I could think of, so no.
Okay. Okay. Shelley, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Hi Jenny, how are you?
Hi, I'm good Shelley.
Good. I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
In the letter you wrote to us that included, I think, your resume materials, you wrote that it is imperative that the leadership of McCandless must do all it can to help McCandless remain attractive for growth and success. So my question to you is, what things do you think McCandless is doing well in this regard? And what things need to be done or improved upon that we are not focusing on now?
Okay. So, being a resident of McCandless, I've seen tremendous growth in the way of business development. The McCandless Crossing is definitely one thing that started happening shortly after I came into that part of town. I was, I was living in Westview at the time, and we were hoping to start our family and get them into North Allegheny School District. So, I believe that with the project with McCandless Crossing coming in, it really opened up a lot of good revenue tax base, a lot more things for our citizens to be able to enjoy and partake in. It just seems like it's been a pretty successful endeavor for the township. Other things that I believe the township has, has done pretty well in, you know, communication with the school district and, you know, just keeping our citizens abreast of, you know, the progress, the latest, you know, things coming out of North Allegheny and, you know, things of that nature. I know that North Park is very, very important to many of our residents and the fact that, you know, we've been able to maintain that and, you know, have that really desirable space for many of our citizens to be able to utilize. It's really a treasure. I actually belong to Friends of North Park group on Facebook, and it's a really wonderful insight to all of the things that, you know, are available to, you know, everybody from every age range, older folks to the youngest of young. You know, the fact that the pool has been upgraded and although this year makes that a little bit challenging for usage, you know, those are some things that, you know, make this area very attractive.
So what could we do better?
So, you know what, I am pretty happy with the things that I've seen occurring within McCandless Township over the years. The one thing, and I've always been very environmentally aware and, you know, just a champion of keeping McCandless and, you know, anywhere that I might live looking great. I know our Adopt a Highway programs are out there, but I'm not sure how active they really are. And, you know, with the seasonal changes, it just seems like there is, you know, quite a bit of litter around. When I travel from, you know, different cities and different areas, you know, some of the more modern places, particularly in the south, like you never see trash and clutter and debris of that nature. So, you know, that's one thing that, you know, when somebody comes in that's visiting from out of town, because I'm a Realtor, and, you know, I take clients from, you know, anywhere and could potentially show them properties anywhere throughout the north area of Pittsburgh. And, you know, being that McCandless, Wexford, those areas are really desirable places for people to start families, you know, just the aesthetic of a town gives a wonderful first impression. So, you know, if, if something, you know, to that nature could be perhaps addressed a little bit more and get some, you know, more organized groups taking care of those kind of things. I know that for infrastructure wise, there have been complaints regarding, you know, internet things. I don't know how directly the town council would, would deal with that. But also too, the drainage systems, I know that with the coming in of McCandless Crossing, you know, that's created a lot more traffic, a lot more businesses using the public waters systems and the sewage systems. And I know that that can tend to affect some of the other parts of the North Hills area. So, you know, those are some things that perhaps we could take a look at a little bit closer as well.
Okay. I have one more question.
Yes.
Thank you. So as a real estate agent, you do have unique insights into what people are looking for in a community. And I was wondering what your opinion is about the town potentially building a community center in the future? And if you're in favor, would you support a tax increase in order to bring this amenity to this community?
Okay. I think that would be a very attractive option because at this point, you know, we don't have anything like that. When I was living in Westview, then, you know, the Ross Community Center was very highly utilized and that was something that a lot of folks looked forward to, to using. And, you know, I look at our neighboring townships such as Hampton. Hampton has an amazing community center as well. So I think that that would be something that's very beneficial that, you know, again, on top of having our park systems in place, a community center that would support some of those indoor functions and places for folks to gather, places for, you know, maybe the stay-at-home moms and individuals who want to, you know, get their children involved in more activities and being able to meet other members of the community, I think would be a huge benefit to having a community center. And it would just create more of a cohesiveness as well. Because I think if you have a centralized location where folks can come, gather, participate in programs and activities, that's going to create more of a, you know, a more cohesive community. And I think that today with the way, you know, a lot of families are double income and neighborhoods just aren't like they used to be, let's face it, you know, people are working a lot. And sometimes they might have, not have those opportunities to meet their neighbors or meet other folks. So that would be a good place to get those types of connections and relationships going, you know. And, and I think that it would bring a lot of benefit as far as folks coming in from out of state, out of the area. It would just be another attraction, another amenity that could draw people in and, you know, keep our citizenship numbers up in McCandless and, and also to, you know, perhaps bring some more jobs in because that would be a great way to advertise things through a community center. So I think it would be extremely beneficial. As far as the tax piece of it goes, so, you know, I did review the budget and I know that there was a good cut for, you know, this fiscal year. So, you know, I think that we would definitely have to take a look at the, the information, just take a closer look at all of those numbers and see what makes most sense to the folks. Because, you know, that it would be supported by the community and by the taxpayers at McCandless, I just think that we need to look at, you know, the benefit of that in priority to other projects and things that are being also looked at. But as far as I'm concerned, because I'm a very family-oriented person, I would think that that's something, you know, if, if we could take a look at what's going on with other projects and how those monies are allocated, it, I think that we should be able to, you know, support that just based on, you know, vetting the information and the data from the other projects.
All right. Thank you Jenny. That's all that I have.
All right Shelley, thanks.
Angela, would you like to go next?
Yes, please. Hi Jenny, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thank you for taking the time to interview with us tonight. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, you went from being a nurse to a real estate agent. That's very, two completely different careers. What motivated you to change?
Yes, it is. So, I started my nursing career a long time ago and I saw a lot of things happen with healthcare in the region. So I, you know, graduated from nursing school in 1991. And I literally served the gamut as a nurse. I went from bedside care as an ICU nurse at, in the Pediatrics Division of Children's Hospital. And had the opportunity to experience case management when my previous husband and I decided to move to Richmond, Virginia for a while. So I stepped outside of clinical care and got more into the case management track, working with insurance, then also working on the hospital side of things. And if you're not familiar with case management, that's a position that requires a nursing degree. And you basically create a plan for the patient for their entire throughput of their hospital stay from the time they hit the emergency room, or if it's an elective admission, to the time that they're discharged and setting up all of those post-hospitalization ancillary services. As time went along and, and I got into leadership roles, I did get into management and went from being a supervisor to a manager to a director of several hospitals, and then went back to the insurance side of things. So I served almost 30 years in the healthcare system. Quite frankly, I got burned out. That's the honest truth of it. I really enjoyed my career. I feel like I gained so much in the way of experience and knowledge of, you know, our health community from an insurance standpoint, from a provider standpoint. And so I just felt like that chapter of my life kind of ended. And I had always had a passion for real estate, just the whole concept of real estate had always interested me. And so I started doing, you know, some, some research and decided that I would become a real estate agent. Now, the one really interesting thing about that is, I thought I knew just about everybody in McCandless because I worked at Passover Hospital for a long time. I had a nickname, folks used to call me Julie the Cruise Director because I floated as a case manager and literally learned the hospital and the hospital staff like the back of my hand. So I got to know a lot of folks in the community and made some great connections. That also took place for me in the real estate world. So because of a lot of those connections, I had a pretty good knowledge of the different pockets of the North Hills, where folks were coming from, what resources were available to them. And so I just, you know, thought that going from nursing to real estate is a lot more transferable than most people would think. The interest, another interesting thing about that is when we were first, brand new nurses, you know, even in nursing school, we're taught that the care plan is pretty much everything. You triage patients, you figure out what's going on in their lives, what the diagnosis is, what needs to be addressed, and how you're going to carry out a plan through their hospital stay and afterwards with the follow-up. Well, I took that whole concept and directly applied it to my real estate business. So I use the triage when I meet my clients. I do the whole assessment, I figure out what it is that they need, and then I develop a plan for them, and then it just leads them through to, you know, hopefully a purchase and a successful closing.
Very good. Next question is, do you, are you aware of any conflicts of interest you might have that would get in the way of your serving on town council?
No, I've reviewed the bylaws and at this point, I don't believe that I have any conflicts of interest. You know, if something should arise down the road, you know, I would certainly seek guidance from the leadership and from the rest of the town council members, you know, to see how to address a situation like that. But at this point, I do not.
Okay. And then my final question, and you've sort of answered this already when you talked about your job and how you've gotten to know the community, but, you know, you're being appointed, you haven't had the opportunity to knock on doors and find out what's going on and what the needs are of your neighbors. It sounds to me like you're fairly well-connected, but do you kind of have a, a plan to garner feedback? And it's an awkward time, I know, you can't go really door-to-door anyway right now, but do you have a plan for how you're going to stay in touch with your neighbors and the people in Ward 4 to kind of get the feel of what they need?
Yeah. So again, I'm kind of old-fashioned, traditional, if you might say, when it comes to family and community. And, and it does make me sad that we're not as connected as, you know, perhaps when we were growing up. You know, the parents were always out on the front porches and they were looking out for each other's children. So, you know, I, I plan to get out in my neighborhood because I know that that's one thing that's not really happening in my neighborhood. I live behind CCAC North on the presidential streets. And even though for as big and as, you know, well-structured that community is, you just don't see folks. So, I really want the opportunity to get out and meet people, you know. And I, being a real estate agent, I'm not afraid of door knocking, I'm not afraid of, you know, going up to strangers and just introducing myself and my mission. So, you know, that would definitely be something that, you know, I would try to work on, perhaps maybe getting some moms. I believe very strongly in, you know, women, whether they're in business or whether they're stay-at-home moms, or whether they're, you know, partaking, you know, any community programs. And being, you know, a single mom myself, you know, I find that it's really important to rely on others, create and develop trust within your community neighborhoods. I do participate on the Nextdoor app, if anybody's familiar with that. So, I got on that for real estate purposes mostly, but it really has been quite an eye-opener of things that, you know, people talk about, people discuss their needs, their concerns, their neighborhood watches and things like that. So, I'm, you know, I would just play off of the information from, from that, and then just what I know about the community itself from being a resident here for so long.
Okay. I do have one more question. I'm sorry, other councilwomen, I have a bunch. I've lost track of it, I'm sorry. Oh, you mentioned, you mentioned that you were part of Friends of North Park. You mentioned in your letter about serving with nonprofits, a few volunteer positions, boards of trustees. Can you tell us a little bit more about your community involvement that way?
Absolutely. So, I have a strong spiritual base, faith base. I have served with very relational organizations. So the first one that I participated in, for almost four years, I was a mentor with an organization called Young Lives of North Hills. So there's a national organization called Young Life, and that's for teens across the United States, just to get connected, you know, a wholesome program that provides faith-based support and education. Young Life is a subsidiary of that, which mentored teen moms who made the decision to keep their babies, whether it was from, you know, alternative things that they could have done, they decided that they were going to make a go at life. And, you know, as far as a little bit of my background, my mother is Filipino, she was a first generation, she came to the United States, she became a citizen here, and, you know, was, was, as far as I could tell, a successful homemaker in the community. And, you know, just knowing how important the mother as a role model is to our children, I really sunk my teeth into that organization. I mentored several teen moms who had toddlers up to eight to 10 years old, and actually took in one of the, one of the girls at one point with her two-year-old son. She resided with us for about nine months. I helped her to get unemployment, I helped her to get education. And also just, you know, provided an environment where she felt safe to be able to raise her child until she could get herself up on her feet. And that was a very rewarding experience. And, and outside of that, fundraising is a huge passion of mine. Through the nonprofit service, that's when I kind of discovered that that was a strength that I have. And again, being, because I'm so community-oriented, that was another thing that helped me to get to know the local business owners. Because through the fundraising efforts, you're going out, you're talking to those business owners, you're asking for their support to support, you know, a really great cause. So that helped me along with that. The second organization that I was part of is called the Pittsburgh Experiment. It's, it's been around since 1955. It's a workplace organization where it's basically, you know, people in the workplace who don't have time to, you know, go to church perhaps, or to go to, you know, participate in, in other types of groups and such. You know, just, it's a very organic organization where you just base it off of authentic conversation. It's so simplistic that sometimes people can't really even understand it. So you make those connections with people in the workplace, you just either lend a listening ear, or you actually, you know, provide some resources through the organization to help them get to a goal, reach a goal, or, or do something that they feel like they need to change. And whether it's a work environment change, whether it's a family life change, whether it's something that has to do with their finances, relationships, things like that. So, I was on the board for that. And again, I was the lead on fundraising. And for our 60th anniversary, we had the most amazing turnout. I, we held a silent auction, and we still continue to collect money even after the event was over. So that was very successful for me. And then just recently, I joined another organization. I was actually invited onto the board. It's called Touchstone Cares. So, a very, very good friend of mine who owns a wealth management company, he started this organization, and he happened to also be one of the executive directors of the Pittsburgh Experiment. And that's where I got to know him. So he invited me onto the board. They support a school in Brazil in a impoverished community, and it's a 10-year commitment. And so I basically have been invited on to bolster the fundraising piece for that organization as well.
Okay. Thank you very much Jenny.
You're welcome.
Carolyn?
Hi Jenny.
Hi.
A question for you, I'll try to hurry things up. You mentioned that you'd like to create a positive change for the town on your application, and which ways would you see that?
So I hate to sound like a broken record, but again, it's going to be through community and through, you know, folks getting together and, and just, you know, providing safe and more interactive types of environments. I'd love to see more family groups created where people can come together and get away from the screens, get back to being active again, physically active. Again, like I said, the North Park, our park systems are a great way to do that. Going back to Shelley with a community center, you know, if, if that were to come to fruition, I would definitely sink my teeth into something like that. Because I really think that it's important. You know, we've kind of gotten segregated as a community and, you know, kind of staying in our little silos of our homes and our backyards. And now that COVID has occurred, I think we're even feeling that more, that, you know, some folks are really experiencing a bad sense of isolation, others are trying to create new ways to, to stay connected. So I'd like to explore some, you know, ability to be able to, you know, create some more community-type programs where folks can come together. You know, if we go back to the Adopt a Highway, you know, get more volunteers, get more people out in the community doing things for, you know, say nursing homes or volunteering for hospitals. You know, some of those things have become passe over the years, but they're very much still a needed service. And, you know, just reminding people that, you know, relying on one another is, is a really important thing because, you know, God forbid, you have a community or you have a neighbor who's shut in and, and somebody has no idea what's going on with that individual. It's, it's just a good opportunity to get people outside the four walls of their house.
When you say Adopt a Highway, is that the roadside cleanup that you're talking about?
Yes.
Because we have a program where we do it twice a year, in the spring and in the fall. But I know, that's where our EAC.
Yeah, I do know. I am aware of that, but in between there, there's a lot of stuff that happens. So I know that sometimes the resources aren't available, the ti, it's a time commitment. You know, maybe we could take a look at that and see if it could be bolstered or even more frequent, like maybe one right in the middle, I don't know.
We do have a list of residents who actually, like I, on my street, Perrymont, I have a neighbor who maintains, he walks the street almost once a day.
Okay.
Which I've mentioned, we should put Scott down for an award, putting out this summer. But yeah, we do have people across the town that do that whenever on their time, but I.
Yeah.
And I think, so I know you're on all these different, like committees and boards, do you think, like time-wise, you have the time for, to be on council and stuff?
You know what, I have, I have looked at my timeframe commitment, and I feel at this point in, in my life, it's really important because I have two kids, they're teenagers. And, you know, I'm looking for, out for their future. And so with the board, I'm only active on one at this point. So the two that I had mentioned, the first two that I mentioned, I'm no longer, you know, serving on the boards. I am still members of those organizations. So that time commitment has, you know, substantially decreased. The time commitment, we're still trying to figure that out for Touchstone Cares, just because of everything that's happened with the pandemic, everything has had to be reorganized. You know, as far as my Realtor job, it's flexible in that I consider myself, you know, in high demand, but, you know, flexible because you never know with a real estate agent, or with, with clients, you know, when, when they're going to need something. But I'm, I'm pretty good at setting expectations. I'm pretty good at, you know, time blocking and just making sure that priorities are in order. You know, of course, you know, having kids and other things that kind of play into, you know, life. You have to be able to think on your feet and switch gears. But, you know, as far as the time commitment goes, I'm really ready for this. I feel it's really important, like I said, not only for myself and for a successful community, but also for something for my children, so that, you know, they have, I have that to look forward to for them.
Any more questions Carolyn? I couldn't hear you. Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Trish?
Hi there. Hi Jenny, thanks for being with us tonight. I appreciate you being here. A couple of the questions I had were answered. I do have one question. You mentioned the development of McCandless Crossing and how that's added to McCandless culturally and business-wise, tax-based, giving our residents something to do. Now with COVID, you know, I, I'm thinking more now about the small business in our area and development of that and encouraging people to take a chance on McCandless, possibly bringing in more diverse business owners than we currently have. And I'm wondering what your eyes, ideas are on that and how you think you could encourage that as a Realtor. Also, I am also a Realtor, and I hear that from my clients. It would be great to have some more restaurants. I don't know if you have any ideas on encourage, you know, our small business to succeed here?
Absolutely. So, I don't think that anybody ever really realized how important small business was until this all came along. And, you know, just looking at some of these companies, some of these businesses that, you know, were generational, that have been around forever and actually wound up having to close their doors. You know, it actually makes me really sad because, you know, growing up in and around Pittsburgh, you know, I look at places like Bloomfield and Oakland where, you know, the O closed down. And we know that, you know, some of the more popular restaurants that had been around forever have closed. And now we've got, you know, as a Realtor, at this time, you know, I think, Tricia, you can appreciate, you know, when investors are looking at a game plan and their forecast, you know, it's, it's going to be buy when, you know, prices are low. And at this time, like, you know, they're just not quite sure what's going to happen with the money, what's going to happen with, you know, the, even with the next quarter of, you know, trying to start a business and how that's going to succeed. So, I think that if there was some kind of comprehensive way that we could sit down and look at, you know, the structure of a small business and how to You know, the structure of a small business and how to tackle a challenging time like this. Although we've never experienced anything like this before, maybe providing some sort of support system for them. You know, whether it's through a brochure or whether it's through, you know, other investor type and small business experts. To just provide general information to kind of allay some of the questions and fears that they have. I know particularly for me where I live, I'm just going to use this as an example, Bistro 9101. That sits on 19. We know that over the years, you know, there's been several businesses that have come and gone from that location. But when Bistro was there, it was starting to be one of the most more successful off-the-main drag small businesses. And I, you know, it was unfortunate that, you know, the arrangement that they had, the place wound up shutting down. But now that location has been sitting empty for almost two years now. And I don't know if there's, you know, any thought of anything coming in there anytime soon. But, you know, I would love to see somebody occupy that just because, again, it's a good location. They provided a great service, you know, something a little bit more different than the chain restaurants. It was a locally owned business. So just trying to maybe get some of those spaces filled, advertising them more, working with the investors and the owners to maybe. You know, look at other ways to market those properties and get them moving. And then on top of that, like I said, you know, educating somebody who either has been in the small business world. Or is looking to get into the small business world, trying to provide them with information on what to expect. For the rest of the year and for, you know, perhaps the next year or the year after, when it comes to small businesses.
Thank you. Any more questions Trish?
That's all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank you very much for applying Jenny. It's a, it's a pretty courageous thing to just say, I think I'm going to look into this or do this. There are a lot of people that said, oh, I just couldn't do it. I just couldn't do it. So I want to let you know that I appreciate your applying and respect that. I also wanted to tell you that the 9101 Bistro is going to be a dental office. It's going to be a whole new building. So they've already come to planning commission, so something is going there. So that will, that will plan out. But I think everyone covered the questions that. In one way or another that I was going to ask. So unless anyone has something else that would like to ask. I thank you for your time. I think we plan on voting at the end of the meeting and deciding what we have to decide today. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. I think now we can unmute David Smith and welcome him as well. Okay. Hi David again.
Hi, how are you?
Good. David, to be fair, I always say the same thing to everyone equally. And that is that we have your application and with your resume that you sent to us, which of course we have reviewed. And so if you had something that you wanted to add, you can certainly do that. But otherwise, we will just jump right into the questions.
No, no, I don't think, I don't think I have a whole lot to add. I think it's all there. Work experience, you know, I didn't have the need for a current resume, so that was kind of put together relatively quickly. So if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer it, but.
Absolutely. Okay, Shelley, will you start us off please?
Sure. Hi, is it David or Dave?
Either one. I go by both. Usually David, but it doesn't matter.
Welcome David. Good to see you. Okay, so in your application, you stated that you want to, and I'm quoting you here. Try to work with people of all views for the good of all residents in these politicized times. So that was an interesting statement to me. And could you expound on a little more on what you mean by that? If you have particular views or actions in mind that would benefit the town if you were to be appointed to council?
Sure. I don't think it's as much particular actions in terms of. You know, a concrete step to take. It's more a. To take a step back because I don't want to make it sound like I think that this is a problem with the town council, which I don't. I think it's a broader problem right now. Everything seems to be politicized. And it's people take positions almost blindly. Without being open to hearing what other people have to say. You know, it's one thing to disagree with somebody. It's another thing to just not listen to what they're saying. And to me, a broader issue, again, this is not directed at council. This is just, you know, my personal feeling and observation. Is that people don't listen enough right now. And there's a lot of middle ground. There's a lot of room to talk with people. But you have to be open-minded and you have to be willing to listen to people. And listen to people who don't necessarily share your views. A lot of, you're not going to agree with a whole lot of the people 100% of the time. But that doesn't mean you ignore their views. And so that's really what I was getting at with that. So it's not anything specific to council. It's just a broader issue. That, that I think is important. One of the most important things right now, I think.
It's challenging times. Sure. Thank you. So kind of on the same topic, but a little different. So could you tell us one or two things that you do think that our town government is doing well? And one or two things that you think does actually need improvement?
Sure. To start, I mean, I think, just, I've lived in the town now for 15 years. I've lived in Pittsburgh for about 20 and I moved up here in, actually next month, I think will be my 15-year anniversary here in McCandless. And my wife's family has been here for a long time. She's lived here her whole life, as have the rest of her family. So just from living here, you know, the services that are provided are incredible. You know, I really think all, you know, all of my interactions that I've ever had. With the police, you know, across the street is a volunteer fireman that lives here, which I know isn't part of the town. But it kind of goes to the broader, broader view. All of the services and the people are great. And I think that really the approach of all the people that I've ever come across with, with the town. Has been superb. A perfect example is, I know he just recently retired. But Bruce Betty, I worked with a number of times because of the restaurant. And then funny enough, like a year ago, I actually filed for a variance for my house. To have a home addition put on and worked with him again. Just, you know, a phenomenal person to work with. And almost all of my interactions have been. Excuse me. Yeah, so I think the services are great, pretty much across the board. The one thing, the one biggest thing I think that I would like to see a little bit more of. Is more communication with residents. And I know a lot of that is residents, you know, maybe just not taking the initiative to go to the website and look at things for themselves. But as an example, I know that, you know, and I don't know if this is possible or something that is available. But I receive an email every couple of months from Congressman Mike Doyle. Who, you know, even though I'm a registered Republican, he does these. Maybe bi-monthly mailers through email, just to keep up to date on what's going on. You know, the current issues, current bills, and I find those very informative and interesting. And I'm the type of person that likes to collect that information. And I know a lot of people, it just might not occur to them, oh, I'm going to stop by the town website and take a look at the last meeting minutes. Not that emails would have to go out for everything, but, you know, for major developments or just as recaps every now and then. I think something like that would be useful. Also, when I, when I owned the restaurant. You know, I, I wish it was, there were, I wish there were more resources that at least I knew about. And they might be there and I just don't know. For example, you know, even job posting boards, things like that. If there was a centralized location or, you know, whether it's through the website or a physical location. You know, that kind of thing. And so I'd say that communication is, is probably the biggest thing. Not that I think it's bad, but more communication is always better.
For, just for the record, and so just to help you. We do have actually a monthly McMail. So you just need to sign up with your email. And you will get a monthly report of everything going on. As well as Savvy Citizen and Facebook as well, so.
Right, right. And I do follow on Facebook, you know, that's hard to follow sometimes, you know, it gets lost in the feed or.
That is true.
You're linking out and things like that.
Okay. So I saw that you were on the Board of Pittsburgh Cares, which is a great organization, by the way. That was a while ago.
Yep.
But do you have, it just wasn't on your resume, but since that time, it sounds like you're a very busy man with your career. And you changed careers to become an entrepreneur and now you're doing something a little different yet. But have, are there other things that you're doing, volunteerism, service, provide, you know, anything else that. You know, you've done in addition to your paid jobs?
Right. I had, I did sit on the board for Pittsburgh Cares for a while, a few years. Since, once I started the restaurant, I essentially had no extra time. It was because not only did I have the restaurant, but I was also working full-time as an attorney at the same time. So it was essentially two full-time jobs. I sold the restaurant in 2017, so it's been, you know, two and a half years. Coming up on three. And so. I took it easy a little bit, just having the one job. And, but that's part of why this position caught my eye. And it's not in terms of, of time. You know, I, I'm used to having very busy schedules. So the time commitment for me is not, not an issue at all. And this is the, the kind of role that. You know, especially once I sold the restaurant, was something, it's actually something that I've been thinking about doing for a while, even before selling the restaurant. And it was one of those things where I just didn't even have an idea where to begin. Because, you know, it's, this is something new for me. But I think that with, just with my experience, what I've done. And what I like to do, this is a good match for how I can use my skills to help. You know, help other people, help the residents of the town, help the township.
Very good. I could probably ask you five more questions. I'm going to turn it over to my fellow council people.
Thank you for sharing Shelley. Angela, your turn.
Thank you Shelley. David, nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us tonight. I appreciate that you applied for this position. I was impressed with your resume. And at the very bottom, I see that you're a certified gold panner.
First person ever to ask me about that. I've been waiting for somebody to ask me about that.
Please do tell.
So we went on a family cruise in Alaska. And one of the side trips we did was to go gold panning. When we signed up for it, we just thought it was gold panning, but it was actually enough where they could give you a certified. At the end of it, after showing you how to do it and you go out and do it for, for a couple of hours. You know, they, they said, okay, you are now, we can now certify you as a gold panner. So it was, it was a neat experience. Alaska is really cool. Really enjoyed going up there to visit. And that, that was just one of those neat experiences that I actually forgot that that was on my resume. But nobody has ever asked me. So thank you for being the first person ever to ask me.
Hey, you're welcome. If we see you out in Pine Creek with a little pan.
If you see that. You know.
Okay, I do have a couple more serious questions too. First of all, are you aware of any conflicts of interest that you have that would get in the way of you serving on town council?
No, no, I'm not aware of any at all. The work that I do now is, I put together legal content for Thomson Reuters. But it's, it's really content that law firms, that help law firms do their job. So I'm not like actively representing clients or anything like that. So there's no, you know, unless, you know, the town is considering entering into a legal services agreement with, with practical law. Which I would highly doubt. There, there wouldn't be anything I could imagine that would be a conflict. If something came up, you know, where somehow, you know, some of the work that I did in my past would be a conflict. I would definitely be able to flag that and, and recuse. But I don't think there would be, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing really ongoing that would be town business that, that would get in the way. Other than normal kind of personal conflicts because, oh, I know this person or something along those lines.
Right. Okay, and Shelley kind of covered one of my questions. And the last one I want to ask is. How do you plan to interact with the residents of Ward five, or pardon, four, you're in four. To, to kind of get their feedback and get a feel for what their needs and concerns are?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, you know, I'm over on Meadow Crest, which is kind of in the corner down there of the ward, or of the whole township. But, you know, door-to-door is something that I would definitely do. I don't know if it's, again, I don't know if personal emails, not personal emails. Emails from a particular person of town council to a particular council member. To email lists with, you know, just updates or asking for feedback or anything like that. I don't know if that's permitted. If that's something that's permitted, that would be something great to utilize to, to get feedback. You know, other, there's other thoughts by, aside from that, I have a son who's 22. And he's actually interested in politics. He just graduated college. He's going to grad school in the fall. But, you know, I would kind of recruit him as a helper in that sense. And I know he'd be more than, more than interested in doing that. And, you know, there, there could be other things to, you know, outside of the box stuff. Even, you know, using the Facebook page to link to a survey, a Survey Monkey survey. You know, if there's just kind of random questions that we, that we would like to get. I don't want to say immediate feedback, but, you know, informal internet feedback, if you will. Other than simply responding to a Facebook post to have actual, an actual survey. Because those Survey Monkey surveys are free to do. I don't know if there's IT issues with, with, you know, sending one of those out or with using it. But, you know, things like that, to think outside of the box, what's, what's a way that we could get more people's input on more things?
All right. Thank you very much David.
Thank you.
Carolyn?
Hi David. So Shelley asked my first question. So my next one, which answered. My next one would be is, in which ways would you like to see positive change or any goals or new ideas you'd like to bring to this position?
So it's hard for me to say positive change because I haven't been involved with council. You know, so, you know, it's, I feel like. I'd be making assumptions if I said, well, I want to see this changed and this changed, when I don't know what goes on behind the curtain. But generally, I think, I'm back to the very beginning of what I was saying, was just more broadly. Is working on more consensus building. You know, where not everything has to be contentious, or even if it is contentious, people work together to say, okay, how can we work through this? You know, that's where, between being an attorney at a large firm and being an attorney at a small firm. And being a business owner, you have to learn to work with a lot of other people. people, and you have to learn to work with different people in different ways. And that's all part of working with people, you can't be set in your own ways, you know, certainly with opinions and with, you know, things that matter to you, yes, but in terms of how you interact and how you try to get feedback and work with people to, to reach a better solution, that's, you know, that's something that's worked together on, instead of two forces fighting each other, and then whatever, whoever wins the battle, you know, wins the day. You know, that's, again, I'm not specifically saying that, that town council suffers from that, but it is a broader problem right now. And other than that, just, again, the information sharing, both ways, from residents to council and, and from, from the town to the residents, just whatever, whatever can be done to, to increase that, you know, increase the transparency and increase that two-way communication, I'm always all for.
Thank you.
Tricia?
Hi David, thank you for being with us tonight.
All right, thank you.
In, in one of your prior positions, you had a little experience with oil and gas contracts, and I am curious to know if you have reviewed our town's ordinance, if, yes or no, and a second follow-up, if you know of any communities locally that you feel are doing a great job in this regard, and are making a good example for how local communities around the Pittsburgh area, in a place like Western Pennsylvania, can move forward on this issue?
I have not looked specifically at the town's policy on, you know, oil and gas issues. You know, I assume that there's a number of restrictions, and so most of my oil and gas experience, at least here in, in Western Pennsylvania, was in more of the outlying counties, so you're dealing with different issues there, you know, it's having a Marcellus well out, you know, in a county that's sparsely populated, is a lot different than having gas wells in a place like McCandless. You know, so the issues are much different in terms of what you have to consider, and in terms of what you're looking at. Some of them are the same, you know, you still have environmental concerns with, with runoff and with fracking and all of that, but it's a fundamentally different equation when you're looking at a more populated area. It's, so I have not reviewed either McCandless's or the, the surrounding townships ordinances on oil and gas. I would say that, you know, it's, it's a lot harder to pull off oil and gas leases in a place like McCandless, again, because of population concerns, you know, population density and things like that. So unfortunately, I can't really give you a good answer to that, but I am familiar with the issues and I am familiar with the industry, and so that's something that I'd be more than happy to, to take a look and, you know, look through many different townships ordinances on.
Okay, kind of switching gears, because like yourself, I've worn a lot of hats, I also had a small restaurant here in McCandless, and worked 99 hours a week or more. So, but when the pandemic hit, you know, I thought of how I would handle it as a restaurant owner if I was still in business. Having that experience, is there, do you have any ideas, suggestions, how the town can support our small businesses in relation to the pandemic, in very specific ways?
You know, it's, it's really tough, because again, I sold it in 2017, and, you know, watching everything that's, that's going on, I have thought, you know, what would I be doing in this case? And I really don't know, you know, the, you know, if you owned a restaurant, you know that, a couple things with restaurants is, they, they work on small margins, you know, the employees depend on, well, at least the tipped employees depend on bulk, and restaurants live for their weekend business. You know, the Monday through Wednesday, generally speaking, that's not when you're trying to make your money and pay your bills, it's the weekend business. So, you know, the, the role of the town in that is, is really hard, because, you know, it's affecting all small businesses, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of issues going on, from, from the Paycheck, Paycheck Protection Program, to the unemployment compensation, you know, I do know people who, who still own businesses, and I know that they have employees who are making more money on the unemployment because of the federal kick-in. And so it's really hard to say what could be done, but a couple ideas, you know, again, would be kind of job posting boards, and it's not even a job posting board, but more of an exchange, almost, like, this is, you know, where people can go and say, here's what I'm looking to do, here's what I'm looking for. Trying to work with, you know, I, I think the town could, could even take it upon itself to, to look at the, what, what the governor's office has put out, and brainstorm, and talk to small business owners, and say, you know, look, we understand this is what's now required, you know, what can we do? Restaurants are a little different because they're subject to, well, if you sell alcohol, you're subject to, to the Liquor Control Board, and so they have all sorts of rules, which I'm glad to see they've loosened some during COVID. But if there's ways, I, I know, I believe the, the town Facebook page was posting business hours that were open for small local business, particularly towards the, the first couple months, and I think that's a great thing to do. You know, whatever, it's a hard time for everybody, and whatever stuff that can, that small business owners can utilize, hopefully at no cost, you know, if there's existing technologies that, you know, that small business owners could use through the town, like those Facebook posts, I, I thought those were great, you know, a little hard to navigate, but that's the nat, the nature of Facebook. And I think there was also on the website, information, on the, on the town website, information regarding small businesses, but if there's any, you know, again, having the restaurant background, it's a little hard because of the LCB and because of the, the Health Department, you know, so those are things that the town can't really change. But if there's other things that the town could change, you know, it's, any kind of regulations, I guess, that the town could change to loosen any restrictions on local business temporarily, you know, these are, these are people's dreams that they've put their life savings into. A lot of them are taking a huge hit right now, and not all of them are going to make it. So whatever can be done to try to avoid that, to try to protect those people's livelihoods and, and dreams. You know, it's, it's hard to come up with specific plans because there, again, it's private industry. You know, on the one hand, you could consider a lessening or a deferral, even if you don't cut it, a deferral of the business privilege tax, but that will hit the town, and so realistically, is that something that can be done? I don't know, you know, it's something that would have to be looked at. I believe I saw that business privilege taxes had their due dates pushed off, if, if I remember right, from, from what I saw on the website. But next year, it's, it's still going to be an issue, so maybe the, maybe you can phase back the due date, so instead of jumping right from December 31st to whenever it would be due next year, which I think is, is tax day, if I remember right. You know, instead of having it due then, maybe you move it back three months a year over the next three years or something, to, because timing is an issue for small business. You know, the, the break to pay it late one year might not make a lot of difference if they have to pay three months later. It's just looking at things like that, what, what can the town do without digging itself a hole that it can't get out of, or that it can't handle, but that, you know, I think the thing that people don't realize a lot with small businesses is, every little bit of help like that really helps. It's appreciated, and it, it, it helps more than you might imagine if you haven't owned a small business.
Any more questions, Tricia?
That's all.
Okay. I don't have any questions for you. Does anyone have anything else, a follow-up question they need to ask? Okay. David, I wanted to thank you too, also, for caring enough about our community to step up and take this, you know, big risk, and as I said before, I really admire that, and thank you very much, and we'll be voting on later this, this evening, all right?
All right, well, thank you all, thank you for the opportunity, and take care.
Thank you.
Hi David.
So, right now, I will need a motion to adjourn this special meeting, and then we will be going into executive session to discuss some litigation and a personnel matter, and hopefully we will be starting our meeting at 7:30 PM, though I'm feeling like we're going to be a few minutes late. I apologize for that, but that's probably what's going to happen. Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Give us a minute to close up the, the meeting to the public.
Does everyone want to take a quick, well, quick break now, or you want a break after executive session?
I'll break after, it's fine with me.
Okay, all right, that's fine, too. Okay. Are we good, Bob?
We need to unmute Tim. Soon as we unmute Tim.
Is the recording off? Is the recording off?
No.
One minute.